Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order, the mayor and council. We appreciate one of y'all coming here tonight. We'll have the invocation by Chaplain Anne Baker of the Word of Grace Christian Center, and then followed by the play. You so stand.
That is great. Precious Father, we just thank you, oh God, for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for your grace and mercy, how you kept us. Father, we ask you, Lord God, that you continue, Lord God, to comfort those that lost loved ones in the issue that had those that were injured. We thank you, Father God, for watching over our children, oh God. We just pray, Lord God, that your presence be in our midst as we discuss business of our city. We just ask you, oh God, that you may help us, Lord God, to be in one mind from one court. And we just thank you for everything. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'm pleased that you're looking to the historical act of the United States of America. And to the reality, of course, you say this, one nation under God, indivisible, with every change that has ever occurred.
Now, can I get a motion and a second on approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on August 27th?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Well, no, we had some discussion earlier.
No.
Everything good?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Passes unanimously. Employee recognitions. We got two we want to recognize today. Major Andre Robinson, forty years of service, and Lieutenant Jeremy Jones, twenty-five years of service. I think one at a time would probably be the best, bring them up. So let's get Major Andre Robinson first. You got family here? They want to come up? Family want to come up with? I'm glad to put my glasses on, y'all. All right, well, here you go. "In the fall of 1981, a young girl from Washington DC left her home and traveled to LaGrange, Georgia, to T N College. During the course of her studies, she took an internship with LaGrange Police Department. Her interest and drive to serve led her to pursue a career in law enforcement, and she officially joined our ranks on August 29th, 1984. Following her graduation from LaGrange College, during her time with the police department, Andre has served as patrol officer, a detective, a shift sergeant. She transferred to the records section in 2001, where her leadership and organizational skills saw her promoted to lieutenant and captain as supervisor of records and administration. She was then promoted to major in May of 2023, and she continues to serve our department and our community with excellence and professionalism. We are proud of her work ethic, representation of our profession, and most of all, her friendship. We wish to express our deepest and most heartfelt appreciation for Major Andre Robinson, forty years of service." Chief, would you like to say anything while we're putting pen on? Just a couple of words. Y'all doing a better job than I would. Chief, say a few words.
It's easy depending when you don't have any pressure.
Yeah.
No, I just, I just, when I, when I first came here, I met all the supervisors and I sat down with them one-on-one and I asked them all, you know, what do you want to do? Do you like what you do in the department? And getting feedback and kind of learning everybody. And when I, when I talked to Andre, I said, wow, forty years. You know, how many of you forty? Don't be scared. I will speculate if you don't answer. But I said, forty years, you know, that's, that's a long time to do anything, much less work in one place. And I said, well, you know, what do you want to do? And she said, well, I want to keep working. So, you know, work ethic is a big thing. You can't teach that. You either have that or you don't. You, you can encourage it and you can embrace it. But if it's not there, it's just not there. But she's got bucket full and I appreciate her work and her friendship. All the men behind this word. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I will say she's a good umpire and referee too. All right, now Lieutenant Jones. This is a little bit bigger, right? Lieutenant Jones was born and raised in LaGrange, Georgia. He is father to five children. Has been married to his lovely wife, Janet, for sixteen years. He graduated from LaGrange High School in 1994. He joined the United States Army and was on active duty from 1994 through 1998. He worked at Interface Flooring in West Point, Georgia from 1998 through 1999. He was hired by LaGrange Police Department in 1999. He completed the police academy and was assigned to the patrol division. He worked as a patrol officer from 1999 until 2001. In 2001, Jeremy became the dare officer for the LaGrange Police Department, teaching a curriculum to elementary school students about avoiding drugs and violence. In 2003, he was promoted to the rank of detective. Jeremy worked in the criminal investigations division from 2003 until 2009. Between 2009 and 202010, Jeremy was deployed to Afghanistan as a member of the Army National Guard. In 2009, Jeremy returned to the LaGrange Police Department as a detective. He held that rank until 2020. In 2020, Jeremy was promoted to the rank of sergeant. He was then assigned to the patrol division, first supervising a patrol night shift and later supervising a patrol day shift. In 2024, Jeremy was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Since that time, he has supervised both a day shift and a night shift in the patrol division. We'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Jones for twenty-five years of selfless service to LaGrange Police Department and to the citizens of LaGrange.
Mayor, it looks like Officer Turbin has something to say over there.
All right, you said.
Yeah.
Let him get this, get the pen on and he would. There we go.
I like to make sure there's enough embarrassment. So I've known Jeremy for about twenty-one of his twenty-five years. I can say this about Jeremy, if you had known him, I didn't know him growing up, but if you'd known him growing up, you might not say, hey, I bet he's going to be a policeman. Here we are. People change, I guess. No, Jeremy and I have worked together for a long time, and I don't know anybody with a better work ethic. We've seen some horrible things together and we've, we've had some good times too. I can count myself lucky to have him as a coworker, as a friend, and as a brother. So proud of me, Jeremy.
Yeah. I was just saying earlier today in work session, if you don't get too many times, you get forty-year pen recognitions. That's a great accomplishment. Twenty-five years is, you're well on your way. We appreciate every, every person in that city of LaGrange. And we are, seems like this, here lately, there's been a lot of these pens we've been given. So we need to make sure we got people coming in place for these that maybe going to be moving out sooner or later. All right, let's move on. I'm going to move around. We're going to go to delegations now. We got our former mayor, Jim Thornton, here, who has got a recognition that he wants to present to, for the Champion of Georgia Cities. So we have our former mayor, Jim Thornton, who wants to give a Champion of Georgia Cities Award, a representative, Ms. Debbie Button.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is indeed an honor for me to be standing here at the podium after twelve years of sitting with y'all behind the dais. This is an interesting role reversal, but I'm delighted to be here and appreciate the opportunity to be with you to make this presentation. You all know what GMA does and the role that GMA plays in supporting Georgia cities, including LaGrange. But for the benefit of the audience and those on the television or on the Facebook, GMA is a membership organization. So GMA is a voluntary membership organization that cities choose to be a member of and to take advantage of all the various services that GMA provides. I'm pleased to report that all five hundred and thirty-six cities in Georgia are currently members of GMA by their own choice. GMA does provide a number of services, which include the retirement plans, the insurance programs, training that many of you, I know Councilman Gaskin in particular, has taken advantage of some of those training opportunities. But GMA has a lot of services that are provided to cities. But the reason GMA was founded in 1933 by cities, including LaGrange as one of the charter members, was to provide advocacy, to provide representation of Georgia cities at both the state and federal level. And so as the Director of Governmental Relations in my, in my current role, I actually am the principal advocate on your behalf at both the Georgia General Assembly and at the, and the Capitol in Washington. But today I have the opportunity to recognize one of the two hundred and thirty-six members of the General Assembly, who is a good friend to Georgia cities, who also happens to be a representative of part of the city of LaGrange. And so when, when we, when we called Representative Buckner and asked her about presenting to her an award as Champion of Georgia Cities, and I'll explain what that is in a minute, we said, you get to pick, you know, a city in your district where we will present that award, and she selected LaGrange. So I want y'all to know that. But so the Champion of Georgia Cities Award is, is being given this year to ten of those two hundred and thirty-six legislators. So it's a very select group. It's a group of Republicans and Democrats, House members and senators at the Georgia General Assembly, who have advocated on your behalf and on behalf of all of those five hundred and thirty-six cities throughout the year. In the case of Representative Buckner, she is a good friend to Georgia cities. She's always accessible to GMA and to our GMA staff. She's always responsive when we have an issue at the state legislature that, that she has a role to play in. And in particular, this award is being presented for a couple of things that she helped advocate on, on your behalf. So last year, Speaker John Burns and Lieutenant Governor Bert Jones appointed a joint tax credit panel, a joint tax credit study panel. They appointed six House members and six senators. Representative Buckner was the only Democrat that Speaker Burns appointed to that panel out of the six House members that were serving. And they reviewed all of the various tax credits that are provided across the state of Georgia. But one that Representative Buckner really took an interest in was the historic preservation tax credit. Some of you may know that the Dixie Mill project on Greenville Street was the beneficiary of five million dollars of state tax credit. That project probably could not have happened without that, that state tax credit infusion. It currently, my understanding is that both the Dawson Street redevelopment project and the Dash Mill project are looking at taking advantage of that project. Well, those tax credits were set to sunset in 2026. So they were going to expire and no longer be available for future projects. But Representative Buckner took the lead in advocating for the renewal of that tax credit, the continuation of that sunset, as well as a potential expansion to include additional residential properties, standalone residential properties that have historic value. The way that legislation got, got introduced, it was introduced in the House and, and Representative Buckner was the sponsor. It ultimately got attached to a Senate bill, which sometimes happens as the legislative process works itself through. And she was the principal sponsor on the House side of what became Senate Bill 496, that not only extended the historic tax credits, it also extended to the revitalization zone or the rural zone tax credit. Now, unfortunately, LaGrange, because you're over population of fifteen thousand, you're not eligible for that rural zone tax credit. But your neighbors in Hogansville and West Point have both taken advantage of that, of that tax credit. And that's now been extended for their benefit due in large part to Representative Buckner's leadership. She also, as part of that, as, as part of her representation of LaGrange, she represents a number of cities, but all of the legislators take advantage of the, are recognized that they represent the entire state, not just one particular city. They do what's best for the entire state and all of those cities. In addition, there was a bill that was introduced this past session that would have allowed private water systems to come into areas currently being served by municipal systems and start up a private system without the consent of the municipality. That bill was potentially bad for cities, particularly like LaGrange, who are in the water business. The bill was narrowed in committee to where it would have very limited applicability, only to really a couple of counties down by the coast, and only for a limited duration of time. But Representative Buckner was one of your principal advocates in recognizing that this is something that could be bad, not just for cities, but also for the residents because of the lack of regulation of the private water systems in Georgia. And she's now currently serving as an appointee of the speaker on the Private Water Systems Study Committee, which is going to be meeting this fall and potentially proposing regulations that will, that will benefit the residents who are being served by private systems. So for these reasons, for her general support of Georgia cities and the fact that when she's down at the General Assembly and she's advocating for or against legislation that comes across, she never forgets those who sent her to, to the, to the legislature. She never forgets the citizens and the residents of cities like LaGrange, as well as the rest of her district. It's my honor on behalf of GMA to present her one of those Georgia, Champion of Georgia Cities Awards for the 2023-24 Legislative Session. And Mr. Mayor, it would be my delight if you would come down and join me, and I would, I would ask if all of you would join me in thanking Representative Buckner for her service to Georgia cities.
This feels more intimidating than if everybody was here. Thank you very much for letting us take time from your schedule. And GMA does an amazing job representing you at the Capitol. They are timely and accurate with the information that they share, which is incredibly important for those of us counting on them to be both of those things. The, the, one of the things about the historic tax credit, that if you're familiar with it from using it in the past, we did make a significant change that I hope will be helpful. We're hearing from people all over the state that there are issues with having enough housing that is affordable and appropriate for families to be able to live in. And one of the things that I have noticed is that we have some fine homes that are, the bones of the houses are really good, but they need some revitalization. And they were probably built in the thirties, forties, fifties. But it, but they are still within the fifty-year range of being considered historic. A lot of our historic districts like to focus on the ones that are in the eighteen hundreds. And I get that because they're very special, very rare, and probably need a lot of work to save them and take care of them. But right now, when we're facing such a housing shortage, I thought that we might be able to really do something to incentivize using some of these tax credits to be able to help renovate some of those homes in those more recent historic times. So there will be an effort put forward for us to adjust the definition so that the historic homes that are, that can be considered for this tax credit won't have to be necessarily on the national register. They can be all the other things that make them eligible as historic structures, but not necessarily be on the national register to get our, our state, state historic tax credit. And they can be layered with affordable housing tax credits, so that that would give a couple of opportunities for people to either get one or one of the other. And what we, what I'm hoping is that some of the neighborhoods that I've seen that are kind of in a state of demise might be able to be brought back and flourish, and some of the crime might be able to be averted, and we might be able to have some good neighborhoods again. So hopefully, the changes we made, plus extending the sunset, will be helpful to cities like LaGrange and other, what I call hub cities, that aren't as big as the, the Columbuses, Savannas, and definitely not as big as Atlanta. But would have, this would give another vehicle for you to be able to take care of the housing shortage that you might be, be facing. So thank you very much. It's my honor and my privilege to serve, and especially to serve Ture County and LaGrange. It's been fun to get to meet people at work with you. And I stand ready to, hopefully, if all goes well in November, I stand ready to help you into the next two years. Thank you.
Ms. Debbie, we really appreciate all the efforts that you've put forth for our communities. And we look forward to being able to utilize some of those tax credits and some of the projects that are coming up, as former Mayor Thornton referenced. Thank you again. And we really appreciate you choosing LaGrange to have awards.
I hate that kid stuck for the rest of the meeting.
You're a good one. That's why I moved you to the front.
I know you just came up with a what, but those tax credits are there for like housed over sixty, seventy years old, residential home, they can, they.
It's got to be over fifty.
Over fifty, and they can, okay. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Let's move on. We got a public hearing tonight, and it looks like we've cleared the crowd out. We have the public hearing on Dawson Street Redevelopment Plan Amendment. Do we have, has it been, has it been advertised?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
It properly advertised. Now it'd be the appropriate times for anyone to comment on the proposed amendment, the Dawson Street Redevelopment Plan.
Do we have anyone in here that wants to comment on the amendment? Seeing none, I declare that public hearing closed. Petitions and Communications, we have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation to rezone a 2.2 acre parcel located on William Street from CPGI to TNNR.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Consistent with our discussion this morning during the work session, yesterday, members of our Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended that roughly 2.2 acres of real property located on William Street be rezoned from campus, general industrial, and agribusiness to traditional neighborhood residential. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on October the eighth.
Motion to call for public hearing on October the eighth?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Passing noms.
Thank you.
All right, under City Manager Reports, looks like you got a couple there, City Manager.
Mayor and council, as we discussed in detail during the work session, there are three property disposition items on the agenda tonight. The first is a piece of property at 99 Addy Street that if you're interested in declaring surplus and putting a minimum bid, as discussed, of eleven thousand, six hundred dollars, we would certainly put it out for bid and see what, what the market will bear for that property.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to declare property of 99 Addy Street surplus?
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Passing noms.
The second parcel is on Brown Street. It's across from the Greek Center, 1.6 acres. And we discussed a minimum price this morning of forty-five thousand dollars. If it'd be your desire to throw that surplus, we'll certainly take bids.
Motion to declare parcel 0503D 010046 a surplus property?
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One question. When are these properties going to be?
Jeff will, will put out a, a request for bids, and there'll be a bid date, and then people will have until that date to submit a sealed bid. And we'll send that to y'all. They'll have to work on the calendar, looking at the statute, but we'll let you know what it is.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Passing noms.
And the last item, Alton's going to touch on briefly. He mentioned it this morning. There was a portion of an alley behind 1100 Murphy Avenue. And so we had a request from a, from a citizen that they could use that property.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As we discussed this morning at the work session, we do have an alley that is coming before you for asking to be abandoned. The property owner at 1100 Murphy Avenue, Mr. Smith, has asked for the alley to be abandoned so that he may be able to move and access drive easement further to the west on his property, because he would like to develop the property, building at least two homes on the lot that currently used to have a home, a single-family home there on that lot. There is an active sewer line, as we discussed earlier this morning. No structure will be built over that active sewer line. But there, again, the alley to the rear will give him a ability to move that access easement further to the west of his property.
The city has no need to property it would be a, a good use for the city.
So we just need to declare.
Or just.
All right.
May I have one question?
Okay.
Where the sewer line is, I didn't pay close attention to the map this morning. Is there room on either side of that to, to build a property? We do believe, and it may be he would like to be able to put two homes on the lot. If he's not able to get two homes on the lot, as I stated earlier this morning, he said he would like to turn one facing Cypress Street and one facing Murphy Avenue. But if he's not able to, he would at least put one, a unit. I'd like to follow up with another question. I know this isn't the time, as you'll recall, for a second, but I was reflecting on it. And so what we're doing is we're abandoning this alleyway, turning it over. This is his request.
That's right.
But my question is, is for access for the other people that want to access the other portion of it, wouldn't we then be moving it and not abandoning it?
They would have to relocate that easement, that he has a private easement that he'll have to relocate with the property owners.
Right. So we're not helping him with that easement?
It's not a city.
No, 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 no. It's, it's a private easement over his property, so that the property owner at 1102 has access to the rear of his property.
Now, just for giggles, what if he says, I don't want to do that? Or do those people no longer have access to the property legally?
Well, I have spoken with the property owner, Mr. Smith, and he has, in his words, he has no desire to not allow them access, because it is a recorded access easement.
There's an existing easement. They already have those rights. You're going to have to convince them to move those rights further to the west. So that's between those two property owners for account. They're not going to lose access.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about, because I was like, if that was the case, then maybe we need to turn the cabbie out.
Okay, question, question.
As long as this worked out, cool with it. All right. I want you to call for an abandonment of the property on the back side of Murphy Avenue.
Got a motion?
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yes. This morning, we expressed our desire to, if we were going to abandon this property, we're going to insist that he got the house. And that, is that something that we're still looking into? That's what we discussed this morning. We're going to insist that, you know?
I, I mean, I just want to thank, thank you for the easement. It's only five feet, so.
I think we're talking about another parcel, another discussion.
The one you're talking about.
Talking about Brown Street.
That was on Brown Street.
Brown Street. No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about this one too, because the guy, we're giving him, we're badly giving him this, because we said that he was going to be able to put two houses onto the property.
Possibly.
Possibly. Yeah. So what I'm saying, yeah, I'm talking about, I know what I'm talking about. So are we still interested in doing that or nothing? So are we still interested in doing that or nothing?
So I mean, that's up to the council, I guess, if you want to put some sort of idea, but I don't know.
I just think we got as short as the housing in any kind of way, especially if we're going to abandon or give something, I would like to see him put housing on that property.
There's no, that's the only thing he can do, is residential over there, but he may not be able to get two. He's hoping to get two.
Let's keep it okay. They got it that way, dude.
Yeah, it's just five feet, so.
Yeah, if I may, it is zone TNR, which is traditionally residential, so he would be able to put back a single-family house there with the lot size foot shrinking from 12,000 square feet under the old ordinance down to 3,000 square feet. That's the reason why we say he would possibly like to get two units there on that property.
Okay. I just asked a question because I'm just trying to make sure that we're providing adequate housing on every little piece of land that we got, every, we got it, every little piece of land. That's all I got.
Even if he doesn't build a house, he's going to start paying property taxes on that property to stop getting taxed, right?
And as Jeff pointed out this morning, evidently, if we put renovation laws on property, it's basically difficult for financing.
He can vary. I got you. I forgot. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Passing unanimous. Under resolutions, we got approval of Dawson Street Redevelopment Plan Amendment.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this would extend the timeframe for the development, for the redevelopment of the Dawson Street School, an additional two years. As we discussed, due to COVID and inflation, the developer had a difficult time getting this property completed on time. She also wants to pursue the historic preservation tax credits that we just discussed, which was not in her original plan, but now because of the economical changes in the project, she is planning to pursue those tax credits and needs time to do that. So if it be your desire, we would recommend approval of this amendment to develop.
We just had to focus here, some of them come in, so can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the redevelopment plan, AKA can down the road.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? No. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Passing unanimous. Approval of the special use permit for a parcel located at 137 Parker Place.
Who's going to read that?
This is senior city's on, right?
Yes, I was wondering where Mr. House still was.
I think you thought it was done, or you had to go back to one. Without him explaining it, I can say motion approved.
It's just the leisure living, special use permit that y'all are familiar with.
Motion to approve.
He left.
Second.
You got a motion and a second on the floor.
I got a motion and a second. If there's any discussion, everybody understands what we're approving.
Yes, sir.
I got a motion and a proper second. Any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Passing unanimous.
He just barked out.
No first reading orders, it's a second reading order. It's a UDO text amendment regarding garage door width and minimum door size.
The ordinance, Mayor and Council of the city of LaGrange, to amend the ordinance, the city in order to modify the allowed width of front-facing garage doors for single-family detached homes, to modify the front porch dimensional requirements for single-family detached homes with a front-facing garage to repeal conflicting ordinance, just fix and affect the date for purposes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Passing unanimously. Second reading on UDO text amendment regarding minimum lot frontage.
The ordinance, Mayor and Council of the city of LaGrange, to amend the ordinance, the city in order to modify the lot frontage requirement for single-family detached homes with front-facing garage to repeal conflicting ordinance, just fix and affect the date for purposes.
Motion approved.
I'll be back.
Got a motion? Was that a second from you?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Passing unanimous. No board and agency appointments, we do.
I got a question on those.
Okay.
Oh, boards and agencies, the point there. This might be a question for another time, but I got to ask it, because I see, I see so many people get appointed to boards and everything, and find out their own, and I'm like, how did I get there? So how are these things done?
So the council usually appoints most of them, and we haven't appointed any recently, but they come up on different intervals, some of them are three years, some of them are one year, some of them are.
I won't drag, I will get, we'll tell somebody later on, I won't drag you out.
We'll get you going to board, I promise you.
As long as it's not.
Long that Partridge.
Oh, it meant now, y'all get four of us both for going to Partridge Ray, you guys go to Partridge Ray. We got, we got, we got Katie Van Show with us. It's a gentleman here, Jim, question.
We've been voted, that's like.
Typically, there are no questions during the second reading of vote. I thought we covered everything. Either it's advanced, the city is very going to watch this.
That's fine, Patrick, we just.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. The good news for tonight, leaving LaGrange better than we found it, the litter cleanups that begin this weekend for our next schedule, Saturday, September 14th at 8:00 in the morning. We're going to be at the Mossy Wood Park, and we're going to clean up the whole entire area. The city will also provide a dumpster to help keep the area clean. We've already set that up, so that's going to happen. And our community partner this weekend is Truitt County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And also, I want to mention, the LaGrange Fire Department will be honoring those lost on 9/11. LFD is going to host its annual 9/11 memorial stair climb at Callaway Stadium tomorrow morning, September 11th at 8:30 a.m. Participants will climb the equivalent of 110 stories or 2,200 steps to symbolize the height of the World Trade Center towers we will never forget.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.